Good evening, welcome to the board meeting. We will all rise.
Forward march. March time, march. Color guard, vote. Order colors. Left face. Order colors. Carry colors. Present colors. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Order colors. Order colors. Right face. Trail colors. Forward march.
If you remain standing for the invocation by Mr. Bud Thorson.
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, we have gathered here tonight. Please bless us who makes decisions on all these children in our school district. Give us the strength, wisdom, and courage to do what's what right in order to continue their education. Bless those in the audience who have attended, and may you have a safe trip home, in His name and His glory, we pray, amen.
We welcome everybody tonight. And the first item on our agenda is South Brunswick High School's FFA group. And if y'all would come forward.
It's actually the FFA in Brunswick County.
Okay.
This is, National FFA Week is coming up very soon. And if it's alright, Madam Chair.
Chairman, I would like to yield my time to the President of the FFA at West Brunswick High School, Patrick Piggott, and the President at South Brunswick High School, Kason Macon.
Alright, so we do have a South Brunswick representative. Okay, alright.
Yes, all of them.
Okay.
We would like to ask the Board of Education and the chairpersons to declare the week of February 21st through the 28th, FFA Week in Brunswick County schools. FFA Week is geared toward bringing awareness to the future of agriculture in the schools for people that don't know much about it and aren't in our group. So we bring awareness to the teachers and other people in our community that don't know as much about agriculture as we do. And also, we would like to invite everyone to our breakfast on February 25th at 7:00 a.m. in the media center at South Brunswick High School to be prepared by our FFA chapter.
Well, FFA Week is a nationally recognized celebration of the FFA. We at West Brunswick celebrate this in many ways. Through many, say, monthly meetings, daily activities such as Dress It Like A Farmer Day, Support Your Favorite Truck, Favorite Tracker. And we also try to do a community service event during the week. We hope, in that partnering with you and making this a countywide policy, that we help to grow our county in the agriculture and in the FFA spirit that West Brunswick has developed.
So we would like to ask you to declare FFA Week and please mark your calendars for our February 25th morning breakfast in the media center at South. Thank you.
Thank you.
And before you leave, we, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Was that at 9:00?
About 7:00 a.m.
7:00 a.m.
And 9:00 is too late for breakfast. You've gotta get to work. You've gotta get to school. In preparation and in recognition, we have a proclamation that we would like to read to you for, and Mr. Tubbs will do that for us right now.
Proclamation by the Brunswick County Board of Education in recognition of FFA Week, February 21st through 28th, 2015. Whereas the FFA was founded 86 years ago for the purpose of preparing youth for careers in agriculture, and whereas the FFA and agriculture education provide a strong foundation for the youth of North Carolina and the future of the food, fiber, and natural resources system, and whereas the FFA promotes premier leadership, personal growth, and career success among its members, and whereas agriculture education and the FFA ensure a steady supply of young professionals to meet the growing demands in the science, business, and technology of agriculture, and whereas the FFA motto, "Learning to do, doing to learn, earning to live, living to serve," gives direction and purpose to these students who take an active role in succeeding in agricultural education and who will provide leadership for North Carolina. And whereas the FFA promotes citizenship, volunteerism, patriotism, and cooperation among all of its members throughout North Carolina, now therefore, the Brunswick County Board of Education, on behalf of the citizens of Brunswick County, wish to declare February 21st through the 28th, 2015, as FFA Week in Brunswick County, and hereby encourage observation and observance by all of our citizens. An official recognition whereof we affix our signatures this third day of February 2015. Catherine D. Cook, Chairman, Shirley Babson, Vice Chair, Mr. Thorson, Board Member, Mr. Miller, Board Member, and John W. Thompson, Board Member. And I'm Les Tubbs, your interim superintendent. And I would like to take just a moment to recognize the teachers who are here with these young folks and that I have had a pleasure of working with over the years during CTE. Becca Lindsey from South Brunswick, if you'll stand. Kelly Richardson, whom I worked with quite a bit. And then the new person at West Brunswick, Dustin Hagler, who replaced an old timer. But anyway, the North Brunswick High School chapter is headed up by John Byers, the horticulture teacher there. And North has another engagement. And they were trying to get here, but obviously, the two did not enable them to make it. So we congratulate all of you.
Yes, if the rest of you will stand that are here besides the teachers and everybody that's here. Alright, and now the moment we've all been waiting for. Our NCSB report on our surveys. And Allison Schaefer, who is listed, is ill tonight. So Scott Murray is gonna be here, and he will come forward and share the results with us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening. And thank you for clarifying that I am not Allison Schaefer. That's listed on the agenda. She does send her regrets. She is very under the weather and has a horrible cough. But I'm happy to be here. I've been working with Allison on the search up to this point. So the main purpose tonight is to go over your survey results. We also have Jim O'Rourke from our office, who's another staff attorney, who has been assisting with some of the search. So before I get into the specific results, I think while I'm here, it's probably a good idea just to give the board and the community as well an update on where we are in the search process. I brought some additional copies of the timeline, because it has been tweaked a little bit. Let me hand these out. So to this point, you guys closed the surveys on January 23rd. So we have put together those results, and that's why we're here tonight. The application deadline was last Wednesday, the 28th. And the board is aware of this. And I think it's been made public, but you guys received 38 applications, which I think is a very good number. So we are now in the process of doing internet searches and pulling transcripts and getting all the other information to go with the application materials together. And we're planning on sending those to you guys at the beginning of next week. So that will be on the 10th. Given the high number of applications, and after discussions with your chair, we thought it made more sense to send them next Tuesday so we can have time to get everything together. So those will come to you personally by mail in probably several boxes. So you will have lots of reading material for those two weeks before the meeting on the 24th, which is when the board will come together in closed session to discuss all the applicants and decide who you want to interview. So that's kinda where we are now, and the next step in the process. The board tonight has received a list of applicants, but like I said, the full applications and all materials should be in the mail next week. So keep an eye out for that. Are there any questions on the process so far before I get into the survey results?
Just one real quickly, Scott. The community and staff input period from December 3rd to January 23rd. Do you have any idea when that, the survey was actually available for the community?
Available, let's see, the 3rd was, I probably have it in here. The 3rd was a Wednesday. I'm pretty sure we had the survey ready by that Thursday or Friday, and then it should've been out to the public. I would say, I don't remember the exact date. But the week of the 8th, I believe it was made public, if not before then. So hopefully, there's been plenty of time for it. Anna was up on the website. So without further ado, Jim has the results here. The board has received these results via email last Thursday, and now we're presenting them publicly to the board and the staff and the community. I will point out, we brought several copies with us, but we do have extra copies on hand. And Jessica and Jill have electronic copies, if anyone needs to request a copy. And I know the media, you guys have already got it. The documents in front of you there. And again, you should've received these by email last week. The first document is just a survey summary. That kinda parallels the presentation that I'm gonna go through shortly. Basically, we took all the input and generated, and it spits out, you know, the top choices that your community members and staff members picked. So that document is very helpful. It's shorter, it's easier to comprehend, wrap your mind around. The next two documents are the full-on detailed survey results. So you can see every answer to every question, all the numbers. We also included the community and staff comments as well. Now by law, this is a public record, so that's why we're presenting and distributing that today. I will point out also by law, we have to redact confidential personnel information and any student information that's included in those comments. So be aware of that. The last two things in your handouts. One is an organizational statement from your teachers advisory committee. And I know Casey and your other TAC members worked very hard on that, and I'm sure the board appreciates that input. And the last one is just an email directly from a concerned citizen in Brunswick County, giving his input on the superintendent search. So we put together everything that we could get as far as community input and staff input, and have compiled that together for you. So to summarize the survey results, you can probably just follow along in that first document, the summary document. This PowerPoint is kinda even narrows it down further than that. But the total results, you had 214 community members complete the, or start the survey, and 275 staff members. And those numbers are about average, I would say. As usual, not everyone that starts a survey finishes it, but you got a pretty good percent that did. And then the total comments from community and staff, you'll see that number's higher because we totaled the comments to two separate questions. So you have comments to question seven, and then comments to question eight, which is why that number's higher than the total who completed it. So let's get to it. The first question asked about, asked the community or staff member to select what they think is the biggest strength of Brunswick County schools. And here you have some agreement between your staff and your community. They're very proud of their excellent teachers and staff. I think that's a good sign. Also, supportive community was very high up for your survey participants. Again, a lot of agreement here and consistency. You'll see that throughout. I think it's a good sign that your staff and your community are on the same page with a lot of their wants and needs in the next superintendent. Location, I think anyone who has been to Brunswick County can agree with that. And supportive parents were mentioned on the community side, and facilities as well. The next question asked about the skills and expertise that the survey participant is looking for in a superintendent. Again, you have some consistency with the number-one choice, which is educational leadership. That makes sense, that you would want your next superintendent to be a strong leader. Communication is big. You'll see, especially with the staff. I mean, you have communication with parents, community-staff relations, and public relations and interpersonal skills. All those kinda deal with a good communicator. So it's very important to your staff. On the community side, they lean a little more towards academics and curriculum, finance, and budgeting, those types of things. So again, we're just trying to hit on the highlights here. All the detailed results are in those materials. As far as the particular traits that your staff and community were looking for in a superintendent, you can see commitment to high student achievement is very high for community and staff. They want to see, you know, the students doing well. That's what it's all about. Integrity also very big. Both wanna see a good motivator and who is committed to the community. So once again, a lot of consistency here. Your community and staff had the same top five, just in a little bit different order. And they had almost the exact same traits throughout the entire question. Now, the next part of the survey asks the participants to rank the statements according to their importance. So four being the most important and one being not all that important. And you'll see, the summary chart breaks that down with the actual, I guess, numerical score for each one. But again, we're just gonna highlight the top and bottom. Classroom teacher experience is very important. I think that's noteworthy, that your community and staff both put that as their number-one qualification as far as experience educationally. So they want someone who's been in the classroom, who's been in the trenches, and understands what the teachers deal with on a day-to-day basis. Experience as a superintendent, also big for your community, number three for your staff. So not only is experience in the classroom good, but experience leading a school system is sought after. You also have, you know, budget, finance, and principal experience as well. I mean, ideally, you can find someone with those three levels, if possible. The next question dealt with more personality characteristics, leadership characteristics of a superintendent. And you can see, again, very consistent answers between your community and your staff. The number-one being that this person will inspire trust, have self-confidence and optimism, and model high standards of integrity and personal performance. Number-two is willing to listen. So not only are they a strong leader, do they set a good example, but they listen to their staff and listen to the community, and are able to make tough decisions. Again, three, four, and five, all very similar, and, you know, almost in the exact same order. Communication skills, you see that pop up a lot in the survey towards the top. So you start to see some trends here based on your survey results. And we also point out the bottom five. And really, what I can say about this is, just because they're at the bottom of the list doesn't mean they're not all that important. If you look at the numerical scores, they're still around a three, which means important, but not mandatory. So this will be nice, but it's not as important as some of those earlier characteristics. So you see, working with legislators, working with the media, data-driven, things like that. Again, these are all ranked out 1 to 27 in the summary document. Now, as far as the comments go, it's impossible to characterize hundreds of different comments. They speak for themselves. I know the board has had time to read through them. But the first question did ask, you know, what is the, I think I said, the most important issue, challenge, or concern facing the school system over the next five years? You had lots of different comments on this issue, and it's really hard to lump those into different categories. But we did see some consistency in terms of what your community and staff were at least hitting on in their comments. This was for question seven. So retaining top-quality staff is big. A lot of people mentioned they want to attract and keep the best teachers in the system. That goes along with staff morale, you know, keeping the staff happy. Budget, always very important, student achievement, and a good working relationship with the board. So that was the first question. And then the second question was more open-ended. It essentially asked, you know, what other comments would you like to share? So again, those will speak for themselves and are pretty hard to summarize. Last few slides touch on the demographics. And for any statistics nerds out there, these slides are kind of interesting. Obviously, a majority live in Brunswick County, a very high number. This is for your community. A very high number of the community people who filled it out have children in the school system. You did have some students fill it out, which is always nice to see, students who are actively involved. Some retired personnel, people in the business community, et cetera. And also, for the ones who do have children, there was a follow-up question asking whether they were elementary, middle, or high school. So you see the breakdown there. That's pretty standard, as far as most, the population of your middle schools and high schools and elementary schools. Same thing for staff. The majority of the participants were teachers, which is not uncommon. You also had over 60 support staff and over 20 administrators fill out the survey. So good to know generally where you're getting this input from. And then finally, the demographics for your staff. Again, broken down, elementary, middle, and high school. A pretty even number throughout there. So once again, it's hard to sum up, you know, this amount of input, but hopefully, this presentation and the summary document can help with that. I guess the important thing now is now that the board has heard from the community and had a chance to hear from your staff via the surveys and the organizational statement, and any emails or public comment. The question now is, based on that input, you know, what are you guys looking for as a board? So the next step that would be helpful for us and helpful for you as you start to look through the applicants would be to come up with, I guess, what's called a leadership profile. And this is essentially, you know, what are you looking for as board members? And what we'll do is, we'll take this feedback, and we'll put together a rating chart. And that rating chart is something that we will send with the applications that will help you sort of rank the applicants based on whether they, you know, have the different leadership criteria that you guys are pointing out. So we're going from the high-tech PowerPoint to the very low-tech. And no pad here.
Good gracious.
So yeah, I mean, if you guys are okay with taking just a few minutes to mention what you're looking for specifically as board members in the next superintendent, that would be super helpful.
It would be super helpful if I knew you were gonna ask that question.
I'll start it off, if you want.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to see someone that is aware of and an advocate of 21st century learning. I guess that's somewhat of a loaded question, but...
I wanted to know, I wanted you to explain that one, John.
I think it's more of what we're doing at the early college high school. More collaborative learning, problem-solving, creativity, hands-on. And innovation is, innovation in education is something that I would like to see. Because I believe we're on the cusp of doing a number of things in Brunswick County that might turn out to be unique for a district like ours. So I'd wanna see someone that's not afraid to innovate.
Can I go, Kathy?
Yes, yes, go ahead.
I'd like to see somebody that can help with the teacher retention and morale issues. Teacher retention and morale.
And the way to do that would be find someone who's been in the trenches, who's actually worked in the classroom and worked themselves up, and understand the teacher morale and how to boost it. Has actually been there and done that. And they need to go into the schools and thank those teachers and staff who does the heavy work at the schools. Be seen. Be visible, I guess. Maybe that's a better word for it.
I'd like to see a superintendent that I'm sure that values the people who work for us, it doesn't matter what area they work in, and does everything they can to create good morale within the schools.
I'll add again, build on that a little bit. But I'd say, someone that's passionate about the children of Brunswick County and their future and education. And we won't grade your spelling.
The handwriting's a lot better than mine, believe it or not. We both used to be teachers, so we're used to doing this kind of thing.
Well, I think if you look at the surveys, a lot of the things we're talking about are characteristics or qualifications that, you know, were on the survey. But I think the number-one that was ranked by the community and the staff was somebody that inspires trust, high level of confidence. I could use the words that you have on there. But basically, somebody of integrity and has high standards of personal performance. And the second one as well, you know, willing to listen. Somebody that's willing to listen at all levels, to the teachers, to the custodians, like somebody had mentioned, and being present in the schools.
We also have, I think, an important role for the new superintendent will be one of the leadership in the community, being able to articulate the future for Brunswick County schools and our children's future. Because we've got to have a number of conversations about the needs of the school system. You know, capital needs come to mind immediately. But we also want to do more with foreign languages and other courses that we're not currently able to offer because of the lack of funding for those courses. So we just need somebody to be able to articulate the needs of the school system and be able to share with the community what our needs are and how they can help us.
This is one that you have successful experience in this election This is one that you have successful experience in this election and implementation of educational priorities consistent with the interest and needs of student, staff, board, and community.
The comments are quite interesting, several of the staff and the community people have made. Sounds like that superintendent and the board needs to have a better relationship.
That was going to be my next one.
And that goes on to, as per the comments that are in here, several of the comments had negative comments about the board, us. So in our relationship with the superintendents. So that definitely needs to build.
Well, it takes both sides of that equation. And I know as a board, I know I am, and I know as a board, we're very interested in seeing that happen with whoever we choose.
Well, we've given you two whole pages.
Walks on water?
He's already busy.
Well, those are all very important items. You know, I can imagine if someone approaches average on most of those, they'd be an exceptional candidate.
Sure. Okay, well, like I said, thank you for that feedback. We will take this and turn it into a nice, easy-to-read, easy-to-use rating chart that you're welcome to use, how you see fit, you know, during the application process and the interview process. That wraps it up for us. Unless there are any other questions about the search, like I said, we'll be in touch early next week.
Any questions?
The number of applicants that applied for this position, it was a very high number.
It's higher than average, for sure, I think.
You've done these throughout the state, so this is, we had a higher applicant rate than normal.
That's a good sign that you have a good quantity and quality.
Any further questions? Thank you so much. Thank you.
Safe trip back.
All right. And next, we have Mr. Doug Burns and his group. Present? You're the group, okay. You just have assistants.
Make some opening remarks. What you will see tonight is a presentation of the design process in the final product. We have Doug Burns with KSQ Peterson and Jerry Winiger, who is a construction manager at Risk. As promised in the early part of the architect and CMAR selection, this was indeed a team effort with the school board, the staff, and some students at the North Brunswick High School and with the construction manager at Risk and also the architect. What was promised was a design that came in on budget, and I believe we are right on budget right now. And I believe that the product is what the board is desired. So with that, I'll leave it to Doug Burns.
Thank you. He has to stand and hold it. You're not going to be able to see it. First of all, thank you. Congratulations, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and the rest of the board. What I'm going to do is just take you through a presentation we did. It was our, we call it, design development submission about two weeks ago. And last time the technology didn't work, but I've got the VURO here, so I think we'll be in good shape today. Basically, what we did was, we've got a project that, I'm going to take you through a little bit about what the project is. We have some testimonials, and there's a video I wanted you to see. A little bit about the site plan, what the project is all about in terms of the plan itself, and show you a little bit about the outside of what this is going to look like. What we were commissioned to do is to really originally relieve the number of trailers out there, which I think has grown from 13, is that right, Craig, up to 18 now? But basically, it was 20 classrooms. It ended up 12 classrooms, two science labs, an exceptional children's suite, a health career suite, a chorus room, and some other spaces that are within the building to comprise the 32, the 30,275 square feet. Right now, the product, the dates are all wrong, but we officially submitted the drawings yesterday. I've got rolls of drawings in the car for Craig. He's going to carry them back. I'm not going to help him, so let him do it, but he's the exercise. But anyway, the product at this moment is slated to be $5.239 million, and we're in the process of confirming that number. So right now, with the CM at Risk, which has turned out to be a very, very good experience for all of us, at this point, the product's on budget. So Bud, you can be happy. What we did was we went through what we call the participatory planning, programming, and design process. It's a process we used many years ago in the Learning Academy, and it was something that a number of the board members, Mrs. Babson, John, I don't remember where Bud went, but I think that they experienced that. And basically, it was a collaborative effort that we were targeting, the limited resources that you've got, and trying to do a consensus-driven process. We had a number of faculty, as well as the principal, and each one of them had some statements to make, which we recorded and so forth. But I think what's more important is, we went through this process, we had a series of about three meetings, we went through a gaming process. And in the end, the design that you're going to see really evolved 100% from their input. So with that...
It has been well-established that North is in need of additional classroom space. We have many teachers floating, but the great thing about it is that the teachers all cooperate very well together, sharing their space. But we're so fortunate that the board members recognize our concern, and they're taking action to rectify our problem here at North. With the additional new building, it's going to make such an impact on the education of our students, the relief of the crunch in space that we have with the teachers. And so it's just going to be a benefit to not only the students at North, but also our entire community. And we're just excited that they have given us the opportunity to have input in the design of the building because being here, we know the specific needs that are prevalent in our school.
Absolutely. And being a new member on staff, this is my second year, being able to have input into that process and being able to bring the voice of the teachers as a whole, as well as the needs of everybody in the community for a new, growing population. It's been a wonderful experience. We've been participating in planning and program design. They gave us this big book. We went, met several times over a couple of months, and the process itself was a lot of fun. But the most valuable part at the end is what we came up with, the product and the goals being met, and the board agreeing to those goals that we wanted to see happen that we put forward. And there's one thing in the process that we were told at the beginning that really struck home with me, and that is every idea is valuable. And I really took that, and I know we all did, and really worked from that goal point.
It was privilege, it was my privilege as a student to be able to represent the student body and to give our opinions about what we need and our concerns. And high school is our home for four years, so I am actually proud to say that we have created something that's going to benefit our community and the students and the staff as well. So I'm excited to see the new addition.
And I know every time that I actually take a look at the building or go inside the building, I'm going to just think about the entire process. Us sitting here, designing, placing classrooms, living the life of classrooms, to be trying to decide what would be the best option. I think that experience in itself is always going to be something that I will remember. And definitely being able just to sit and kind of speak for the teachers. Being a part of North for about 10 years now, so just kind of seeing how we've blossomed and how things have changed that we're going to actually have something to meet those changes, so very excited about that.
Exactly. This community has grown in population vastly over the past 10 years. There have been many, many changes, and this new building certainly will meet those needs presently as well as in the future. It is going to be such an impact on our community as a whole. And again, we're just so grateful, and I think that I can speak for the team here that participated with the architects in designing the building, that we will have a structure that we can be really proud of in this community because the school is a landmark in our community.
What the project entailed was the relocation of the bus drop-off. And the building, the reddish color is really the location of the facility itself. And the location of it means a lot to what happens for the experience of the kids. But basically, Craig's done a really good job, along with Steve, in relocating the bus parking lot, which is, you'll see that, and that's what the gray area is. There'll be an additional parking lot for the faculty. And then when everything is all finished, that green section to the lower left will actually be there. What was important, and what Cheyenne didn't say in her testimony, in her testimonial, was something she said when she was actually talking during the PPPD process. And that was, she said something to the effect that every Monday morning, we come to school. And, you know, we don't want it to be a depressing experience for us. So we want something that was exciting, something that made us feel good, it made us really want to come here. Well, this building and the location where it's located actually does that. I'm not going to go through a whole lot of the goals, but what came out of it really was the concept of you have a science, math, and art little complex that we've created, and there's an opportunity in the future, not through this budget, but to do something with the courtyard, and you'll see that in a little while. The building is really simple. It's very simply organized. The north is to the top, the east-west access, you can see the little rectangles on the left, that's actually buses. And the experiences that the children will see will be, they'll get off the bus, and they'll go through what we hope is going to be a very well-lit, light, naturally lit, kind of a nice space that we hope that what the district will do, allow the students, particularly the art department, to do graphics and things. And we'll show you examples of that. To the upper left-hand corner, you see the sort of the bluish color. That is the health science facility adjacent to the exceptional children, which is the, sort of right below that. And they're the first responders, which became one of the organizing elements of the school. Because allied health and things like that are what's really happening in our society today, the two green classrooms across the hall actually could serve as expansions of those programs. And the way the lab is designed, the students could actually share the lab. So the students that are currently in the blue area could move across the hall for lectures and so forth, and that's the intent of it. The lower quadrant at the bottom, which is, we call them neighborhoods, in the lower right is really the chorus room. It also has a separate entrance for the community to use that facility at night. You could actually, I think we figured with a small little dance ensemble or a band or something, or a musical, some kind of a performance, you could probably seat 75 people and make it kind of a mini black box theater. So it could be something that can be used well beyond just a school. Across the hall, we have classrooms that obviously could serve as dressing rooms as well as classrooms. So that represents level one. To the right of that, as you walk through the east-west and the far east, that is the courtyard that gets created that I think has a lot of opportunity. The lower right box represents where the band room is, and directly north of that, across the courtyard is where the art classrooms are. So you've actually created what we call a STEAM, which is a science, technology, engineering, art, and math, without even trying. It just happened. So it's going to have a neat idea and how you parlay that. The second story is organized with two science classrooms. The upper left is the earth science classroom, and there's a general lab below that. And again, the same concept is as science grows, if that happens in that school, you have the ability to co-use those spaces. The lower portion, that lower neighborhood really, and all green, really represents general classrooms. The color in the middle of it, which you see the little dots there, we're calling that a collaborative learning space. And this is probably the first time we've seen this done here, where the wall that separates that space to the classroom below it is actually glass. And the students can actually write on the glass. There'll be floor-to-ceiling marker boards, and hopefully you all will put some flat screens in there with the kids and hook their computers up. And they'll be doing some collaborative learning in that space. So it's a real flexible space. We put that there in lieu of a study room. And the idea, when we went through and walked the school, we saw students in the hallway that were actually working, and some of them were proctors, some of them were just sitting outside their classrooms, doing small, little things. Obviously, they're, you know, the students that the faculty felt that they could go out and sit in the hallway and would be organized. This gives them that space. This is just, this very simple building, this is a shot looking to the northwest, where you see that entranceway is the entranceway to the chorus area. The front of it's a very simple building. It's a two-story structure. We're matching the metal roof, like the color or not, that's what the color is going to be. We're trying to match the roof, the brick if we can. It's going to be a challenge, but we're trying since it was built so long ago. This is the other shot looking back, I guess that would be southeast. Give you an idea of the scale of the building, trying to get as much light in as we can. The courtyard itself that's formed is really an opportunity for the district to do something special. And we're not, this is not part of our contract, but there could be, and we haven't really designed this up in great detail, but the idea is the students could come through, we could make some connectivity with some kind of a canopy at some point in time. So when they come in inclement weather, they'll be able to at least traverse that courtyard without getting wet. And then the idea would be there'd be some other elements that could be put there, sculpture and so forth. The shot on the left is, these are design development drawings, by the way. This means they're not finished. This is an idea of what it might look like when you got off the bus and walked in, and then when you left in the afternoon, this is what you'd see. So you'd see a well-lit space, and any niceties, just a simple material in the ceiling and some different lighting and some simple walls that can be used for artwork, I think opens it up and makes it really nice. Again, very simple use of color in the hallways. The idea is the art that you see could potentially be things that the students do to decorate. Each one of the hallways represents a neighborhood. So the idea is you have four neighborhoods within this community. This just gives you an idea of a simple way, floor pattern, fairly inexpensive. I know in our interview, we said, simple materials, paint, and so forth is what makes it happen. This is the collaborative learning space. This was one of the first early concepts of it. But it's really an open space that the kids will go in and hopefully teachers will assign. So a teacher working to the left can allow four or five students go out and work on a project. And they could be outside the classroom working on that collaboratively, and that's the intent. Just to give you an idea of an animation of what this might be, this was a little later on. It gives you an idea of the overall design of the project. I said this in the previous meeting, we're going to get in a bus in a second, and don't worry, we're not going to hit anything, but you'll be in a bus in about two seconds. But it gives you an idea of the scale of the building. And we think it relates very well to the existing structure. It doesn't fight the entranceway to the school. And it sets the pattern for the potential of future development on that side if you elect to go to two floors. You're in the bus now, by the way. Again, to the right, that would have been the entranceway to the chorus area, which could be a community room. I can sing if you want. But it gives you an idea, gives you an idea of walking in and what you'd see. Now, if you look straight through, you can see some potential that could be done. Mooresville City Schools has a very similar situation where the art students put sculpture, they do things, and it's all their work. And it makes a really neat space. To the right could potentially be, and that could come later on, a small little amphitheater. Given the band rooms over there, there might be an opportunity for an outdoor, kids playing or a performance. I don't know how far that would go, but again, that would be the art area, be able to punch out that wall and maybe look in that and see art displayed, kids working, and it gives you an idea of the overall. I got one more. This is how technology works. And this is a shot inside. This is the collaborative learning space to give you an idea. Again, you see the glass to the left and the translucent ability, you know, visual connectivity. If we put more people in here, this thing probably wouldn't run. It takes up too much space. But it gives you an idea of the kind of space and what they'd see. It's a light, bright space, and it brings light into the inside of the school, which we think is really a good move. And with that, I don't know if there's any questions or not, but that was the idea. So I think it's been a very successful project. It's been fun for us, and we have our fans back there. So the staff was great, and they're gracious about letting us do this in the library a number of nights, and it was great. It was a really good experience. So, any questions? So, any questions?
Just let us know, you said, or let the community know about the completion date. We're looking at 2016?
That's correct. Yeah. Dean, when do you actually think you're going to start construction? Is it March this year?
I believe it is.
So you have time to, you know...
It would be actually May.
Funding will occur in April.
That's what it is.
Contracts will be executed. Shop drawings will occur, and the construction, the actual building construction will start after school. Civil work will begin probably within the month. And that's doing the paths, temporary parking, and also the starting to prepare the building pad.
Just real quick, you said you had several rolls of drawings. It's my understanding that that is the construction documents.
Yes, they're done.
So they're being reviewed?
Yeah, as of yesterday, we submitted them. They're going to go and do a constructibility review of all the documents. They'll give them back to us if we have to make some changes and adjustments, because that's the nice thing about having the time schedule we've got. I think it's really, it's not a crunch thing on our behalf. But yeah, we've completed our documents. We've complied with all DPI questions. There weren't that many of them, but that's all been taken care of, so.
Well, I'm pretty impressed that we actually took the time to evaluate the premise that we started with, which was 20, was it 22 classroom addition?
Twenty, yeah.
Yeah, 20. Well, we ended up, because we did talk with the school and the principal and teachers and students, we discovered a number of things that basically informed us as the, you know, what really we needed to do there. And we still managed to do that and complete everything on time, so that's...
So again, you're going to get 20 spaces, which is what the original, and the mobiles will go away. The chorus room could be used as a multipurpose room. It has a higher ceiling, but you could actually teach in there if the chorus was, you know, the music teacher wasn't there every period. And actually, that collaborative learning space could technically be used also for a small group teaching environment. So, I feel real good about it. It was great, and we appreciate the opportunity.
I'm going to ask this question because I've asked it many times, and I'm sure the answer is yes. Maybe you could expound a little bit on it. With all that glass, I'm sure it's hurricane-proof. Hurricane-proof glass.
Oh, yeah. John, we have no choice. You can put a two-by-four through that baby. No, it's not going to happen. There's some very strict codes down here that you must comply with, that wind and hurricane. Yeah.
Do you have the drawings up at the school? Did we put those up in the lobby at the North Brunswick?
Those are going actually to ours. So it's for all the necessary...
And that would be for the community to take pride in what we're doing up there?
Looks like our offices work.
Well, the manager said, but I just was informed that they have a minority, what do you call it, the hub?
Hub outreach.
An outreach for minority contractors. If they can borrow, I've got two back there for you. If they can take those, then he'll bring them back. In good shape.
Just one more note, Madam Chair. During the short video testimonial, Ms. Grady expressed her appreciation to the board for our listening to them. Well, I'd just like to thank the staff and the students that participated at NORC for working to make a better school. They deserve our thanks.
Well, I think that's another, just a segue into what we were talking about, the superintendent. That's what we want. We want that collaborative work going on in the schools, you know, with the board. And that's just a great example of how this has worked out. So thank you, Ms. Grady. And we have enjoyed having you at some of the committee meetings as well, and the student was there, I think in December, was it December at one of the committee meetings, the student? Either November or December, we had several of the members that were on the committee come to the committee meetings, and that was very helpful, too. So thank you for taking that time. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Very good presentation.
And without any further ado, our Teacher of the Year, Teacher's Voice, Ms. Casey Smith.
I'll just see what are the Teachers of the Year here. Tara Cumby, right back there, and Ms. Deborah McKeithen is our Instructional Assistant of the Year. She's recently joined TAC.
Okay.
And also Teresa Ryder in the back. So I was going to highlight tonight the main points from our organizational statement regarding the hiring of our next superintendent, which is really fitting because I knew that Scott and the School Board Association would be here sharing the survey results. And it was really cool to hear those survey results because I feel like what we penned to give you all, which is in that packet, and anyone in the audience, if you'd like a copy, Ms. Swinski has one right here. I feel like you're really going to see a lot of echoing of those results, but then also some places where maybe some blanks were filled in or more clarification comes. So first, allow me to fill you in on, you and anyone else listening in, on exactly what the makeup currently is of our Teacher Advisory Council of 2014-15. It consists of Teachers of the Year or appointed teacher representatives from all 19 schools of Brunswick County, as well as one exceptional children's teacher representative and one teacher assistant representative, Ms. McKeithen, who I just mentioned. The purpose of the TAC is to foster open channels of communication between Brunswick County Schools, administration, the Board of Education, and Brunswick County teachers. The TAC seeks also to provide opportunities to foster professional leadership for teachers in their schools and in the BCS educator community. So it is from the spirit of teacher leadership and from an empowered voice that we submit our organizational statement regarding the experiences, qualities, and characteristics of our next leader on behalf of all of our colleagues. Teachers are the employees of Brunswick County Schools who spend the most quality time with the students of Brunswick County Schools. We are on the ground, so to speak, every single day with the number-one client of our school system. So it makes sense for you all not only to ask for, but to utilize the ideas of these employees when it comes to selecting our new leader. And we do offer our genuine ideas and good faith that they will be strongly considered and utilized. I'm going to scroll this down just a little bit. The leader of BCS that teachers seek will have, number one, superb interpersonal skills; number two, previous experience as a principal and teacher; and number three, a desire to remain current on educational best practices. First, when we consider interpersonal skills, we want a leader who can relate to us and our experience. We want to see him or her in our classrooms and hallways and engaging in conversations with us. Most importantly, we request an individual who will continue active participation in various forums for communication with teachers. This, of course, includes but isn't limited to the TAC. Second, experience as a principal, assistant principal, and teacher in a public school system that has a similar student and community demographics as ours is significant to teachers. In regards to her or his classroom teaching experience, the classrooms of BCS serve a unique population of students, as you well know. The best candidate will have had actual classroom teaching experience in a public school system that is comparable in size, location, and demographics to Brunswick County. Third, educational best practices are constantly evolving. A leader of our school system will certainly be a lifelong learner of educational best practices. Maintaining a close watch on not only research, but also policies that affect instruction is necessary for our efforts as a school system to close the achievement gap among our schools and students that did not meet growth. Teachers want our next leader to be well-versed in curriculum development and data-driven instruction. We've labored through some growing pains recently as a professional community in BCS around the topics of data and reliable assessments. We need to continue this learning process and see it through, not just kind of give up and jump to another initiative. Teachers would also appreciate a leader who advocates for an increase in collegial and financial support in the area of technology and technological infrastructure. Additionally, our next superintendent will model effective professional learning communities, an ongoing focus and sought-after best practice in Brunswick County. He or she will encourage principals and teacher teams to collaborate on decisions and school-level PLCs so that ownership of the visions of our schools are shared and therefore more likely to be accomplished. Above all, board members, the teachers of Brunswick County Schools value a leader who will advocate, take action, and make decisions on behalf of our students and us. We seek a leader who will provide diverse perspectives and experiences to the joint managerial decisions that face our system's future. We affirm that any decision made by committee should involve careful consideration of all sides, consequences, and possible effects. All sides are most successfully shared and represented when there are diverse and assorted views and ideas on a particular topic. We do not want a follower. We want a leader and a visionary, someone who will move Brunswick County Schools and its community forward as active participants in the 21st century. Finally, teachers wish for our new leader to maintain a focus on the current visions and emphases that our school system has established. We are in need of a smooth transition and continual execution of our current focuses, especially with respect to literacy, data, and professional learning communities. So that concludes my elaboration on our organizational statement, and I also wanted to share that next month during this segment, I was going to share a synopsis of the questions that teachers submitted to Representative Frank Eiler. Mr. Eiler joined our TAC meeting in January, and he entered into dialogue with us about questions that were pre-submitted prior to his visit. He asked for electronic and hard copy versions of those questions because he intends to reference them during his legislative session with colleagues. And we know that that session is going to involve a lot of discussion and emphasis on public education. So the questions I'm going to share, and which, by the way, are already posted with TAC Minutes on the website, and they're, you know, viewable by the public, public. They're a great representation of the overall concerns that teachers have about the future of our profession, especially in North Carolina. So they're very relevant for you as our elected officials, as well as for the general public's awareness. So this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions or clarify any points. That is all I have for this evening.
Really thorough.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Where are we going tonight, Jesse?
Our school spotlight. Traveling around the county.
Exactly. That's right.
On the bus. You know, I hated to say, but it looked like that bus in one of those presentations hit the building, but you know, we're not... On the South Brunswick, but it's okay, we're going to... You know we have a shortage of drivers, Ms. Cook. Come on now. Sometimes we have to take what we get. No. I am very pleased tonight to introduce our two spotlights. The first is Jesse May Elementary School, and that will be followed by a conversation with Principal Helen Otto, and then it will be Cedar Grove Middle School with Principal Mike Cobb. So without further ado.
Jesse May is the most best school I ever had. I like Jesse May because it makes me a better learner.
I think you'll find it a very warm and loving atmosphere, and I think that's reinforced when the kids walk through the door and they're greeting you with hugs and smiles. I think sometimes this is the best part of their day.
It's a very exciting atmosphere, you know, from the second you walk in through the door. It's that mindset of determination. This isn't a job to a lot of these people. This is sort of a, it's a calling.
If the children are happy, it's a great place to learn. So we want to approach things in a very positive way. So the children earn their patriot bucks for doing kind deeds.
We are a school that is a PBIS school, which means that we have positive behavior, where we reward kids for positive things.
One thing that Jesse May is known for is our Fine Arts Program. Ms. Ryder, who is our Teacher of the Year, does a tremendous job with the creative side of children and works with all the other resource teachers as well, because, as you know, children just always don't have the gift of academics, but they can excel in other ways, too.
Teaching children is very critical. They are the future of this country. And every day, we come in here to Jesse May, and we give it our all, and we expect that from the children, and we're making a difference.
I just feel they truly are very happy to be here because it is such a great place to be, and that is because of the dedicated staff that we have.
We do everything we can to make sure and instill learning as a valued part of their lives, to make lifelong learners, so that we prepare our students to go on to middle and high school and beyond.
I like school because there's good teachers here. They're kind to kids, and they love us.
Jesse May has always been a heart place. I've always been happy to come to school. There's no reason that I would not like to come to this school. I would never want to switch schools because Jesse May rocks.
We are the best. Why would you go anywhere else when you have teachers that are the best teachers, and they are committed to their children? We love children, and we want to make a difference to every child in their life, because every day is a great day at Jesse May.
Let's make it a great day at Jesse May.
It's a great day at Jesse May.
Please join in me in welcoming Principal Helen Otto.
Good evening.
Good evening. Was it a great day today at Jesse May?
It was.
Every day.
It was. We had a special visitor. I think he can... Yes, we really enjoyed making that film. We do feel it's a great day at Jesse May each and every day. And we are actually going to showcase the school coming up very soon, and you will be getting some invitations for that soon. And we're going to have a Community Day on the 17th of February. So we want to invite the board members and directors in and showcase our school off to community partners also. So if you want to mark your calendars for February 17th. It's going to begin at 10 o'clock, and what we're going to do is just give a short presentation to just kind of showcase us, and we're actually going to show that film. And then we have our children who are going to, it's going to be, you're going to just tour the school as you want to kind of flow through it, but we will have children that will guide you at different points through it. And then we will also have some light snacks in the media center for you. And the children will be prepared, you know, for you to go in the classrooms and to present different things to you and the members of the community.
It also conflicts with our committee meetings, the 17th.
Oh, you can just cancel those.
Yeah.
I do want to say that a comment, it's amazing that school is going on 12 years old. It's hard to believe because the last, when I visited it not too long ago, it's just so new-looking, clean.
It is.
And it's 12 years old. I guess this year would be 12.
Do you have a very short list of needs compared to some of the other schools?
Yes, we do.
But you still do have some needs that you...
We do. What we, kind of on the top of my list is just with the heating and cooling, you know, air conditioning, just to make sure that's up to par in your routine maintenance. We do want to add some fencing back behind the school, just for security purposes. There's not fencing there right now. And then also, when we see our music shows, we actually have to sit on the gym side, and so we don't have a curtain, so you kind of look right through to the cafeteria. So we'd like to put up a curtain there for our shows to kind of enhance that. So those are kind of some on the top of our list.
Right. And you have some other members of your staff with you here tonight? You want to recognize them?
Yes, we have Ms. Price, our fourth-grade teacher, Assistant Jane Grey Browning, and also Teresa Ryder, the Teacher of the Year, our teacher. So I appreciate them coming and supporting the school.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
And now for Cedar Grove Middle School.
Here at Cedar Grove Middle School, our philosophy is we want to make every child have a successful career once they leave, whether it's in the workplace or whether they're going to a university or college. At Cedar Grove Middle School, our students and staff strive for excellence in all that they do.
Cedar Grove gives the students an opportunity to grow and learn in very different aspects of life.
Cedar Grove is preparing everybody's child for the future.
Our staff is so passionate about students. Our staff is caring. Our staff is caring, you know, if there's something that a student needs, there's no staffing here. They are willing to pull out of their pocket to give to another student that needs.
I think Cedar Grove is, is a very caring school. All of our teachers here are just fantastic. They're here to help the kids. The students are really good, and I think we have a great learning environment here at Cedar Grove.
It's just morale. We lift the teachers up because they lift us up. They lift our students up. They don't ever forget about them, so we try not to forget about them, and we have 100% adoptive teachers.
What makes me excited to get up every morning and come to work at Cedar Grove is that I feel I can provide support for my teachers that are in the classroom that sometimes they can't seek while they're teaching, but I can do the legwork and make it easier for them, and that's just my number one job, that I love to, to help.
I'm in Avid, which is a college-ready class, where they take us, and we learn about tutorials, and we visit campuses, and it's just to prepare you and make you want to go to college.
Committees in school program, they give us opportunities to, to have mentors and success coaches.
It means everything to, to see a kid go from the sixth grade, and for me to see them change and grow into, you know, an eighth grader that is getting good grades, doing well, and, and you try and make and mold them so that when they do get into the high school, you know, that's your job, is to prepare them for high school, to prepare them for life.
I like Cedar Grove Middle School, coming here in general, because it's a good place to learn. People are welcoming. It's a good school.
It's a special place to be at. It's really inviting.
Cedar Grove is a great school. It betters you. It makes you want to learn, and it wants to see you grow, and I think when I leave here, I'll better myself in life to become a better person, and I can look back and thank the school for it.
Please join me in welcoming Principal Mike Cobb.
Good evening. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
And I say, you even have a shorter list of needs for you, because your school is newer.
Yes.
One of the newest.
Yes. Our needs, the music room is one of the things that the, the teacher would like to have, just because she has a large number of kids who are coming in and wanting to take music and chorus, and the room that she does have right now, it is packed, and we have as many kids as we can get in there that the fire marshal will allow, and, you know, we have kids waiting to get in there. So, that is definitely one of the needs. And then the landscaping, just some tidying up with drainage issues that we have, but a lot of those have been taken care of, and, you know, it's, it's a great place. I'm, I'm very blessed to be there.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
Well, just note, you also mentioned conversion of classrooms to science labs. So, you, you basically have a shortage of spaces to teach science?
Uh, no, we don't have a shortage, but some extra class labs would be exponential to our, our growth in science and the STEM programs that we're using right now. We have several of our teachers who are working with STEM programs, and having extra lab space would be, would be very ideal.
That's, that's good. I think that's true of all of the middle schools.
I was getting ready to say that that is a commonality between our middle schools is, is we just use roll-on carts and things like that instead of full-up labs.
A lot of our STEM classes right now are meeting in the library, and also, they're using the cafeteria to do a lot of their bigger projects that they have with a lot of the kids, so they're kind of going out of the classroom and going into other areas that are larger.
How many students do you have there?
In the STEM program?
No, in the school.
In the school. Right now, we're just about 500.
The number in your chorus.
They would like to.
They would like.
And they do, and that was one thing when the school first started, that the band program and the chorus program just took off.
Yes, ma'am.
Which is great. It really did.
It's been one of the central hubs, the band and the chorus.
And the band's back on track.
Yes, sir. Band teacher came in January 20th, I believe, was his first day, and he's back on track. He's Casey, Mr. Casey Black. It's great to hear the kids down there playing again, so hearing music coming out, and the kids are, are really excited about having him there.
So, the band room's not too, I was thinking the band room, looking for expansion for the band room as well, but.
Yes, ma'am. They would like to see the band room expand, just because of the, the number of students that are in band as well. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Definitely the chorus room, because it is the smallest of the two.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
It's a great day to be a bulldog, right?
Yes.
All right, well, we've had all our presentations. As we move on to approval of the meeting agenda.
Now, let me ask you a question, because I want to make a change, but my change is with the consent items, so should I wait until you get the consent or make it now?
I need to make it now, probably.
I didn't hear, I didn't hear what she said.
I think it'd be fine. You want to adjust something on the agenda, do it now, yeah.
What I wanted, if you look on your consent item for approval, the one that's 425050757316, North Carolina Address Confidentiality Program, I just had some questions when I opened, when I read that, and I would like for our attorney to talk with Ward about the legal aspects of that, the fact that what says before we approve it. And then there was another one, the alternative accountability model for Brunswick County I think I understood that one, but I think that we should hear from the principal before we make that final decision, and if we could do that at the next committee meeting.
Do we have time, or do we need, we do have time? And it's in the back, in your file back here, there's four different versions, and the version that, that was chosen, and I'm almost sure that the principal is in agreement with this, having talked with her, that we're using a progressive model versus making one up ourselves, which is.
So, she was included in this conversation, and she's comfortable with it.
I think so.
Well, I'm willing to leave it, I mean, leave it like it is then.
And that's in regards to the great performance?
I mean, it, it's either you produce, you look at the, the numbers that are produced, the grades that are produced, performance at the school, or you send that information back to the home school, or you participate in an alternative school progress model that the state is working for us, or we develop our own, and they chose number C, which was a little bit better, easier way of doing business than trying to develop our own or send it back to the, to the home school.
Well, I'll remove that then.
All right, just a question for the policy committee. Is it, is it urgent that we waive the first reading, or can we just say this will be the first reading in case we might want to change things? I mean, was it urgent that we do that?
A lot of these were just very simple changes due to general statutes or new, or new laws, and were not really substantial changes to the policies. A lot of them might have been a word or changing a word.
It came out of the school board association, where they looked at the general statutes and the change in the general statutes and, to match the general statutes.
Just to follow up to Mr. Thorson's question, do, do we have a mechanism to post pending policy changes, like on our website, to invite community input? And we, we actually do that?
I don't think we necessarily have people on here, but we can do that. We have the capacity.
I just wonder, because in reviewing some of the policies that were on the consent agenda, I, I had a couple of questions about some of them, but then I realized, you know, maybe a lot of people would if they were given the opportunity. So, to Mr. Thorson's point about waiving first reading, that does give us the opportunity for a period of review, particularly for the public, so it's not a bad idea at all, unless it's critical that you, a particular policy has to be put in place. I'd say call the ones that are critical for first, waiver, first reading.
We can certainly do that. Most of the time, we've thoroughly gone through these, but, but I, I want every board member to be comfortable before they vote to approve it.
Well, some of these items are particularly important, particularly the one on selection of resources and all, there's been so much controversy in the last year or so.
Are we not doing that one or not?
Well, I thought it was actually on here.
That's a different.
We're not looking at that one.
In my packet, but it's for my review.
It's for the board members to review.
Next committee meeting.
Or the committee looked at it and made some changes on it for you.
Yeah, well, I, I'd like for the general population, parents and all of them, to see it, because, you know, we're basically relying upon parents to make, take a lot of responsibilities, and so they need to be more aware.
You know, you can reach any of our policies off of our website, but I think what you're saying is, and Jessica and I'll get together, pull a section out of that and put over here, say, pending review, and put the new change on it and go from there.
Yeah, just, just simply to give people an opportunity to see what we're doing. It's, it's all, as you would say, transparency.
Transparency again, which we've been trying to work on.
That's the reason it's going to be 17 pages instead of one.
And I think under the committee meeting notes, if I'm not mistaken, then the policy, the information is on those committee meeting notes that are posted on the website as well.
Yes.
Madam Chair, there is one action item tonight that is a policy that is required for approval and posting by March 1st. That would be the only one that would require additional action tonight. Mr. Green has reviewed that as well. It's a little further down in the.
On the action item, okay, right.
Yes, ma'am.
It's, it's on here, it's, if not mistake, 31, 32, and 21, 25. It's added later, and those are time sensitive.
Different time sensitive.
When I say we just amend the, the agenda to have first reading of the policies instead of waiving the first reading.
That'd be fine.
Can I make a motion that we approved the agenda with the change?
Does that motion include the North Carolina Address Confidentiality Program?
No, that's, no.
You can remove that.
Just those under consent items.
Yeah, but, so that takes all of them off, actually, you don't have to put that.
Just the consent items.
It's just for first reading for all of them, so it gives us time.
Okay, okay. So, you're going to leave it on there?
Yeah, because it's first reading. If it's second reading, then take it off.
Yeah.
Okay.
My second motion.
You got it? All right, second, all right, do your vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we move on to approval of the minutes, which are posted for January the 6th, January the 20th, operations, January 20th for the finance, October Operations Committee, and December Operations Committee minutes.
What motion is approved?
Mr. Miller, make a motion to approve the minutes. I have a second.
Second, Mr. Miller's motion to approve all five of the minutes.
Mr. Thompson, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll move on to the consent items for, well, for first reading of these policies. We have policies for second, there are two policies for second reading.
Will we just go, I make a motion that we accept the consent items for first reading?
All right, all in favor? Aye, opposed? All right, policies for second reading, or the consent, that covers all the consent items.
These are not policies down here, these are.
No, those are budget amendments, right.
They're in the audit contact.
And the, well, the alternative accountability model.
Anyway. I didn't know whether the suspended items were included. They're in there.
Approved. It's done.
Okay, that means that they're approved.
Well, moving right along then, we will go to the action items, and these are two policies, second reading, waiving the first reading for policy 2125, confidential information, and 3132 for homebound hospital instruction.
I'll make a motion to waive first reading and adopt and approve the policies 21257315 and 3132 on second reading.
All right, I have a second.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
And that was the two that was urgent, that needed to be approved. And that was the one Ms. Bassin wanted the attorney to look at?
No.
No, it's in consent. We're taking care of that. We can do it before the second reading.
All right, all in favor then? Aye. Any opposed? All right, well.
This was the two that the NCSBA wanted us to approve, ain't that right?
Also the state.
2125 is, right, is a law that must be enacted regarding confidential information, not only of student information, but of staff and system information. 3132 was the simple addition of physician, nurse practitioner, or physician assistant in order to approve homebound services for students, and so that is a, was a necessary change so that we could come in line with some of our students' needs and the providers who are providing their services.
All right, well, at this time, we have discussion announcements by superintendent and board members, and we wanted to just share briefly some of the highlights from the committee meetings, and so if each chair of the committee would like to share some of the information that was discussed and talked about at the different board briefs, we'll just let you volunteer.
Well, of course, we, we were able to get a preview of the North Brunswick High School presentation, so we actually saw that and had a fairly significant conversation about that, that process, and also the process that we adopted in the development of plans for Waukama. It was much more of an integrated design approach, working with the community at Waukama as well, although it, we gave the community the opportunity to impact the design, to hear their opinions, but of course, it ended up, you know, we had to meet the budgets and schedules, so, but we did begin that process of collaborating with the communities with important facilities. Just thinking, I guess, we have a lot of great facilities that I believe Leland Middle's modular structure will be ready for occupancy if it's not already.
It's not.
Not quite.
No, it's not quite.
When we met on the 20th, it was, it was coming up pretty fast, but we put 20 classrooms in place in just a short span of a few months, so do you, do you know, Mr. Thorson?
I thought it was 11 classrooms in the modular.
Well, that's right, it was 11. It was 20.
And I actually visited Leland Middle School today, and, and it's outstanding, it's remarkable what they've done, and of course, there's a lot more, I, I guess, the finishing touches is a few weeks off, I would have to say that. Mr. Molly may correct me, but those classrooms are really large out there, and I'm, I'm just excited, and as Ms. Underwood is, as principal of Leland Middle, to get into those modular units.
Well, I understand that the technology is exceptional in the.
They, they have a smart board in each classroom, which I think is, is outstanding for that. Ms. Underwood has it worked out, they have the staff moved the way she wants it, and everybody's just all gung ho up at Leland Middle right now, although it's not going to solve the overcrowding up there, because there's still 800-plus students, from what I understand, and they're, and they're still using mobile units, double ones.
From the new building. The only other thing I'd say about operations is, you know, we, it's an ongoing discussion about technology in the schools and the need for additional technology staff persons, you know, the teachers. the need for additional technology staff persons, you know, the teacher's workplace satisfaction survey last year reflected quite a bit of concern for technology availability, and we, I think the board is committed to doing something with that, but it's going to require more people, so as budget time approaches, that's something that, you know, we'll have to wrestle with, the technology piece of it, but it becomes very important when we ask teachers to use technology, that we make that technology available for them.
I want to ask Mr. Miley, when is the modular units up there, is it going to be May? Is it May that they should be occupying? That's what I understood, May, and that would give the teachers time to hopefully move their stuff into those classrooms.
It would be good. It'd be done, you know, in conjunction with spring break.
That's going to be close, that would be close.
And I would just...
Yeah, spring breaks would be, that is Easter, and Easter's the first week in April, yes, is that right?
Why's it take so long to set up a modular?
The site, where preparation, foundations, sewer, water.
There's a lot, that is a large building, and there's still a lot for them to do, more or less cosmetic, a lot of cosmetic, and landscaping, a lot of landscaping. And I understand there's going to be a walkway from the building to the modular unit, is that right?
Yes.
I'm really, I think you all need to go see it if you haven't seen it yet, because it's amazing, it looks like just regular classrooms when you walk into it, very large bathrooms.
One quick thing on operations, I'd been talking with Jill today about the interviews that we need to conduct for the designer selection process for the athletic facility master planning. We as a board need to decide when a good time for that would be, and I was actually thinking, Jill suggested that we consider having operations and then going into the interviews. How many interviews do you think we will have, Mr. Miley, three or four?
I believe three.
So if we gave each team an hour, that'll require three hours of our time, but we need to do it as a board.
Right.
Is that a seventeen?
The seventeen.
Do not go to Jessie May and change that date, or just have that date like it is?
Let's, we'll discuss it and see, we need to, I know we need to do that, if that would be a better...
Been kicking it down the road here for a while, and then the last thing, Madam Chair, that I'd say is that I'd like at our next operation committee, everybody to try to show up, because it'll be our last time to kick Mr. Miley around.
That's the next thing I was going to say, is that if you have any last words you'd like to say at a board meeting, this is fortunately for him, but unfortunately for us, his last board meeting, as he will be retiring on March the first, and we appreciate all his work and efforts, and he's overseen a lot of, a lot of projects over the years.
And he has said that this is the last time he has to wear a tie.
Mr. Miley, I particularly appreciate your professionalism and the things you've done to bring about a higher level of efficiency in the operations division over the last, I guess it's been ten years or so, but particularly over the last four when I was here. I've watched operations operate on the same basic budget despite the growth, the addition of new schools, we keep the same number of people. We do add bus drivers, because the fleet has had to expand, but I think you've done a real great job of keeping our schools in good-looking condition, keeping the trains running on time, as it were, so thank you for a job well done.
Thank you all for your support, and it's been a great run, I've enjoyed working here, and I'll be watching.
You and many others.
That's right.
Yes, I expect so.
That's turnabout, fair play, right?
All right, any other...
Finance is next.
Any brief comments about the Finance Committee?
Well, Ms. Kay here would kind of mention to me to keep quiet tonight, so I guess I'm assuming I can keep quiet. So the only thing, as you see in the briefs, is that the board has contracted with Anderson Smith and Wilk, Waiki, to serve as our independent auditor for our system this upcoming year, so, and I don't have anything else about finance, ma'am.
All right, under curriculum and policy, CIS discussed after-school program costs, and this discussion will continue during the FY sixteen budget process. We intend to work with CIS as we have through the years to try to continue some of the programs that they have. School report cards will be released February the fifth by the State Board of Education. There's a new format for report cards this year that provide a wealth of information. Also, new on the report card is a school performance grade of A through F, which is now required by state law. Eighty percent of a school performance grade is based on one end of grade tests, and in, of course, assessments. This information is a narrow reflection of the educational programs and subjects and grade levels within our schools. The school performance grade should be interpreted as one piece of information within the comprehensive report card. And we talk about comprehensive, there's other materials that go with what the state is judging, and it's very good information in there. Brunswick County Academy will not receive a school performance grade, the board is requested to approve an alternative accountability model for BCA, which then must be submitted and approved by the State Board of Education. Administration requests board approval of Operation C, Alternative Schools Progress Model for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen schools year. Draft policies three two oh five and three two ten were reviewed for edits, policy committee members will direct staff as to the next steps regarding these drafts. And this is the one we've been working on so long concerning materials that children will read and retalk, so that's my report.
Madam Chair.
For the audience's sake, Ms. Swinski and I, primarily Ms. Swinski, will be trying to provide you a disc copy of what the committee reports look like. They're just bullet reports, we understand that you don't have the time to come to the committee meetings a lot, and the members of the board wanted you to see what they're actually doing within those committee meetings, and this is our way of trying to show you the bullet pieces, and then as you see us, to ask questions about it for further clarification of what took place in the committee meetings. And it's, again, like Mr. Thompson was saying, we're trying to open up and be more transparent as to what's happening within your school system.
Just a question, Madam Chair, when does the school performance grades come out?
The fifth, which is Thursday.
Probably around eleven thirty.
And they'll be posted, or how, will that, you'll send something out to the media?
There is a press release scheduled from the state level, we can also follow that up with a local press release. We did meet the media members during a webinar that the state held last week specifically for media members. Our information will not be public, though, until Thursday after the State Board of Education approves it, so it's the board's pleasure, we will do a press release encompass our data along with an explanation of that information.
Needs to be a pretty good explanation, this is the first year that it's happened, but just as a note, I heard on a news program yesterday that there, the Virginia Legislature is considering backing up on the letter grade for their school system.
So is Texas, and about three or four, or fourteen others.
Yeah.
We also put for the audience the cover letter that sits on the county report card, that kind of explains a little bit of what the report card looks like, and that's out for our audience tonight also, but that will be part of, and we discussed it with the media, Jessica did, and I think we've got a, at least an active way of trying to let our public see what's going on, and it is, the links will be on our website, how you get to the individual schools, or how do you get to the county one, and how do you, once you get on the link, you can compare our county to another county, our Bolivia Elementary, or Union, or Cedar Grove, to other like schools in the state. So it'll be, it's an interesting time to watch what happens with the new report card.
All right, well, and just the other announcements, we'll have our PAC meeting next week, and we see our PAC president here, she's rooting, cheering, and that will be at BCA, and then we'll have school visits on the next, February eleventh, and then the committee meeting is on the seventeenth.
You know, I think I'm just going to move me a bed down to the Board of Education office.
Liaison committee.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's an important one, I think, too. And I'd like board members to share any thoughts they have, that they'd like to communicate with, you know, the commissioners. Tonight, we talked just briefly about some of the things that we need additional funding for, things like foreign languages, and science, and chemistry labs, expansions at our middle schools, there's many needs that need to be articulated, but has to come out of local money.
Now, this board member plans to be there?
Who is the liaison committee from the board, our board, is it Chair and Vice Chair? Okay.
Do it because they have continuity from last year?
Okay, so Mr. Thompson and Ms. Cook, okay.
Can attend, it's just the two votes, I guess. We just want to, they are public meetings, they're advertised, right?
Well, I don't think so.
They're open meeting, but it's in the, it'll be in the commissioner's closed room in here. We actually are checking on the policy to see who the actual members are, because it may be that the vice chair and the chair are the designated members, but we've just, we're looking into that to see.
Well, I won't be disappointed if I get relegated to the back bench.
But as you said, everyone is welcome, and that's an open meeting, so...
I'm going to sit right around the table.
I don't believe we have a policy, it was just an understanding, understanding at the Chair and Vice Chair, but I don't need to be there, I think we got enough voices there already.
Well, we want you to be there if you'd like to.
No, I don't want to be there.
You have none to do, though.
All right, and we will decide about the presentation from the, for the bids, and see if we can do that.
You want to do that now?
The qualification, the interviews for the designer selection for the facility master planning. Well, we were going to discuss it, because the seventeenth is in conflict with Jessie May's event.
It's the pleasure, it's going to be about three hours, so it would be better...
That's on Tuesday, isn't it? We could do it on either Wednesday or Thursday, couldn't we?
Let's see, school visits occur on next week. So next week's a busy week, you may as well write off next week for interviews, and we need to give the designers at least a week's notice of scheduling, don't you think, Mr. Miley, at least a week?
Eighteenth through nineteenth, the next week?
Nineteenth, will the nineteenth work?
It's okay for me.
Morning or afternoon?
Now, keep in mind that this is something we want all board members to do.
Right.
It doesn't do any good if only two or three of us are there.
I'll get all that.
Okay.
So which, morning? Okay.
Nine o'clock on the nineteenth.
Is there any conflicts that you see, Jill? Or do oper, just the operations and the other?
Finish up our business and go into the interviews? I do wish I could charge admission at times.
No, not, not, okay. All right, we have a date, that's acceptable to everybody? All right, if there's no further discussion or announcements, then I will...
Make a motion to go into closed session as presented under the agenda, second.
All right, Ms. Thorson, second by Mr. Miller, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we will go into closed session.